I'm going to call the City Council Caucus to order for January 11th, 2016. We have one public hearing this evening if the deputy clerk would read that.
Public hearing number one regarding property assessed clean energy finance.
And under final consideration, agenda item number one, if the clerk would read.
Item number one, under final consideration, a local law incorporating 810 Arch Street into Arch Street.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two, under original consideration, a resolution recognizing Sapphire Terry.
This will be taken out of order and Ms. Porterfield will present. We have four items under contract and supply. Agenda item number three.
Agenda item number three, under contract and supply, a resolution accepting the bid and award the contract for demolition and debris removal of 738 Albany Street to Bronze Contracting LLC.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number four.
Item number four, a resolution accepting the bid and awarding the contract for Sodium Hyperchloride Water Department to Surpass Chemical Company of Albany, New York.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five, a resolution authorizing accepting the bid and awarding the contract for Hydrofluoric Acid Water Department Thatcher Company of New York Incorporated.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number six.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing accepting the bid and awarding the contract for chlorine gas to JCI Jones Chemicals, Inc.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. And city development and planning discussed two additional items in committee tonight. Under original consideration, item number seven.
Item number seven, under original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1021 Chrysler Avenue.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. And item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the sale of 824 Grant Avenue.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Nothing else is to come before the City Council Caucus meeting. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Mr. Kozier seconded by Mr. Mutuveren, and we are adjourned. I will now call the City Council meeting to order for Monday, January 11th, 2016. It should ask you to rise for the invocation from Reverend Dave Shetram of Sri Ganesh Mendir of Schenectady.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Beloved us all, pray, finding of pure love, boundless compassion, and endless joy. Lord of lords, glory, glory unto thee. Gracious master, may your richest blessings be showered on the honorable mayor, the councilors, this assembly, and each and every resident in this county. Dear Father, limitless is thy reach, immeasurable is thy glory, and Ayota of your grace, oh Lord, is enough to transcend every affliction, doubt, and impediment of this world. Father, guide us so that we can live in conformity with your wishes, so that our souls can receive the blessings of eternity, and we can grow unhindered physically, mentally, intellectually, emotionally, morally, and spiritually. May the love that usher our joy reign ceaselessly, may we live in tune with our sweet divinity, and may divine grace unite us intimately. Father, forgive us for the mistakes, offenses, and sins that we have committed knowingly and unknowingly. May peace be unto all, may joy be unto all, may divine blessings be unto all. God bless this assembly, God bless this county, and God bless America. Thank you, thank you very much.
I'll ask Joy Hall to lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance. Joy?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one out-of-order presentation this evening. We have a ceremonial resolution honoring Sapphire Terry, and I'll ask Ms. Porterfield to present. And before you read that, just to make sure for the record that everyone is present, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Kozier.
Here.
Ms. Porterfield.
Here.
Mr. Ferrari.
Here.
Mr. Palamene.
Here.
Mr. Reggie.
Here.
Mr. Mutuveren.
Present.
Ms. Parazzo.
Present. You have the floor.
Thank you. A resolution recognizing Sapphire Terry. Whereas Sapphire Terry, a young member of the Schenectady community, suffered a tragic loss in March of 2013, and has shown greater fortitude and perseverance than a person five times her age. And whereas an eight-year-old girl with a simple Christmas wish to fill a card tree with cards, her request touched the hearts of hundreds of thousands of people across the country and around the world. And whereas having received cards and well wishes from Schenectady residents, local Girl Scout troops, family friends, community leaders, celebrity singer Katy Perry, and even the first family of the United States, Sapphire, while grateful, continued to think of ways to give to others. And whereas overwhelmed with a plethora of gifts, this remarkable young lady made a point to visit local shelters for victims of domestic violence and the homeless in order to share the unexpected generosity that resulted from her simple wish. And whereas her story is a reminder to all of us of the beauty and possibilities of human nature, the capacity of acceptance and forgiveness, and inspiration in resilience. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, and city council to hereby pause on their deliberations to recognize Sapphire Terry and her Christmas story that brought joy to thousands. I'd like to move the resolution.
A second, Mr. Mutuveren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is for you? Would you like to say anything? Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you. This is Schenectady. How are you? Schenectady has been so supportive of Sapphire everywhere she goes. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
This evening we have one public hearing, property assessed clean energy finance. And I'll call Alyssa Roth, the Director of Municipal Membership of Energize New York.
Hi, everyone. Good to see you again. I'm here to answer any questions if anybody has them. I'm happy to give a summary of the program again or whatever you like. Okay. So Energize New York is a nonprofit local development corporation with a mission to drive the demand for clean energy projects. No, bye. That was beautiful, by the way. I'm really honored I got to see that. So Energize New York is a nonprofit with a mission to drive the demand for clean energy projects. We provide a financing product for commercially-owned properties in New York State to finance clean energy upgrades. This is an economic development program to grow business opportunities and workforce development initiatives for local stakeholders. We provide low-cost, long-term financing using PACE, which stands for Property Assessed Clean Energy. It's currently active in 26 municipalities throughout New York State, and we're hoping that Schenectady will be the 27th. We're very closely partnered with NYSERTA, which is the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, and all of the projects that we finance need to be approved by them with feasibility study that has been approved by the Public Service Commission. The reason the municipality is involved is because the financing is paid back on a property owner's tax bill, and the municipality will collect those charges and remit them to our trustee, the same as any other tax bill charge would be implemented. We also provide support and guidance to property owners that are undergoing the financing by helping them find the appropriate clean energy program, a contractor to do an energy audit, and the right service professional to upgrade the properties. We do trainings for the local workforce because we want to make sure that the contractors within Schenectady are the ones that are going to be doing this work and getting the jobs. And I guess it's just important to say that buildings with low energy costs are more attractive to buyers, more attractive to potential employers, and it's a tool for Schenectady to lower the cost of doing business within the city. So I'm happy to answer questions if there are any. Thank you.
Mary McLean.
This item is listed as property assessed clean energy finance. That is a fancy title for baloney. The item never should have made the committee agenda, let alone a public hearing for a City Council meeting. If a property owner wanted to conserve on energy, he can do it on his own without the city or third parties getting involved, especially since the city is going to charge an added fee to the agreement. Although an outside party is going to handle the program, the city is responsible for housing copies of all agreements. That means added labor, cost of new equipment, such as filing cabinets, folders, and so on. There is also another setback. The program will encumber the sale of future properties because the cost of a defaulted loan will be passed on to the potential new buyer. Need I say more? Folks, stop buying new toys when you haven't paid for the old ones. Thank you.
Thank you. P. D. Vorus.
I feel like you're walking with the gods when you want to say didda, but I feel the same way about this. This is not a local company. This is from the southern part of the state, and that's got very little to do with it. The fact of the matter is, energy has been a concern around here for a long time. We've had a committee, and we haven't seen this committee at all during this. I don't know who approached who on this. When it says it involves other municipalities, when I search, I find the only municipalities up here that are involved with it are Utica and Troy. Troy, of all places, where technology is huge. It's everything. That's what Troy is about. And if you remember years ago, Mr. Tonko left the Assembly to become head of the New York State Power Authority for the entire state, and he did nothing. He brought nothing to the table about power and technology and saving, any kind of energy programs, and then he got sent to Washington. That's the way business is done around here. This is not a local concern. This is a concern from the southern part of the state that was, from what I can tell, was incorporated before the New York Energy, Energize New York. They created Energize New York Finance Program. Why couldn't all of that have been done up here? There are, for years, I have been contributing to a huge group of people that produce energy, supply their own energy, and sell it back to Niagara Mohawk Allah National Grid. I've been doing that for years. Now why is, why do we not have local representation here? This is out of our control. It is out of our purview. This is going to create expenses. This is going to create a conga line that I don't like, and it's totally unnecessary. They've got enough to handle down there. I've seen the list of entities that are involved there, and I know it's a big thing. And I just am opposed to it. I think we should have been apprised of it a long time ago. We had a, we may still have a Technology and Energy Committee, and at one time Barbara Blanchard and Mr. De La Salle were on that, and we were kept informed if we had questions. Where are they today? Where is that group? When is the announcement of their public meetings being made for us to be there? Thank you.
Seeing as there are no other speakers, I'll declare this hearing closed and move on to approval of the minutes from the December 28th, 2015 meeting. Can I have a motion? Mr. Mutuveren? And a second? Bye, Mr. Kozier. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. And if the clerk would read communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, January 11th, 2016. Under official from the mayor, a list of appointments dated January 11th, 2016. A letter from David Frong, Director of Operations, recommending the award of demolition and debris removal of 738 Albany Street to Bronze Contracting. From Paul Lafond, Director of Water and Wastewater, recommending the award of Sodium Hyperchloride 2016 contract be awarded to Surpass Chemical Company. From Paul Lafond, Director of Water and Wastewater, recommending the award of Hydrofluoric Acid 2016 contract be awarded to Thatcher Company of New York Incorporated. From Paul Lafond, Director of Water and Wastewater, recommending the award of Chlorine Gas 2016 contract be awarded to JCI Jones Chemicals, Inc. Under general, there are none. Under petition, there are none.
And we're on to committee reports. Mr. Ferrari?
Madam President, the effectiveness of fluoride on oral health over the past 70 years is undeniable. The Center for Disease Control identifies community water fluoridation as one of the 10 great public health achievements of the 20th century. It is listed alongside such achievements as identifying tobacco as a health hazard, identifying risk factors for heart disease and stroke, and improve motor vehicle safety. In the July and August 2015 issue of Public Health Reports, the U.S. Surgeon General Vivek Murthy stated that community water fluoridation is one of the most practical, cost-effective, and safe measures communities can take to prevent tooth decay and improve oral health. And people looking to learn more about water fluoridation could go to the website of the American Dental Association, ADA.org, and download their booklet, Floridation Facts, which can be found on their website. The report is written in a Q&amp;A fashion and addresses many, if not all, common concerns and questions people have about fluoridation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrari. Mr. Kozier?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a note on the demolition of 738 Albany Street, just yet another step for the city's systematic planning of ridding the city of bloodied properties and expanding development to improve the quality of life in the city neighborhoods. We are continuing to focusing on leveraging the city resources with private, state, and federal funding. Demolition of this property will be funded by the Capital Region Land Bank with monies made available through the Attorney General's Zombie Property Program. Removal of this building will also enhance the immediate neighborhood surrounding the development, which will begin later on this year on the new $17 million Joseph L. Allen Apartments, and this project will feature 51 apartments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We'll move on to privilege of the floor as related to the legislative agenda. I have two people signed up. Mary McLean.
Just like clockwork, every January, council spends money on an item that is not spent in other capital district communities. Albany never puts fluoride in its water. Other nearby communities stopped the practice six years ago. Schenectady City Council is not on the cutting edge of anything. Recently, someone wrote a letter to the Gazette that suggests people talk about solutions to problems. My solution to the fluoride problem is for you to go to Albany, find out what they do about the drinking water, and come back to Schenectady and do the same thing. That's what you did for the Muslim Resolution. Likewise, go to Utica, ask about their fleet of cars, do the same thing for Schenectady. Go to Amsterdam, inquire as to how many part-time elected officials receive medical coverage at taxpayer expense. Copy what they do for Schenecty and do the same for Schenectady. And we, I didn't expect you to be sitting up there, Commissioner, and we don't need an interim police chief. Commissioner Bennett was in charge of the entire New York State Police before he came to Schenectady. He certainly is capable of handling our city police force without any help. Schenectady is in debt. Use the chief's salary to start paying off the debt to the Foster Avenue facility. The city has been paying interest, but no, nothing on principle since the garage was built. That is not a healthy way to spend taxpayers' dollars. Those are my solutions to the city's indebtedness. As for item number three, demolition and debris removal of 738 Albany Street, why don't these contracts also include the removal of vegetation? The vegetation is still on the lot of the first property that was demolished on Eastern Avenue. When the work is done on these places, the project should be left in pristine condition. That is how this body will start to beautify neighborhoods. Thank you.
P. D. Vorus.
I'm still P. D. Vorus. 738 is a very substantial property, and aesthetically, it kind of blends with the neighboring summit towers. The windows are boarded. This program, this EIC program, would be a perfect match for this building. The neighborhood surrounding the immediate facility is a disaster. It's a slum. There's got to be vermin all over the place. The businesses are extremely old, but they're still viable businesses. This property could and should be weatherized and converted into a mall that would allow these other businesses to remain and do business on a more financially stable balance sheet. It would provide them with lower costs for energy. It would be a better security event, and the area surrounding, if they would just demo the properties these people are already living in. It's a terrible neighborhood there. But to restore this building, provide it with very nice landscaping and parking would be an added plus, not only for that neighborhood, but for those people that are working at the county facility. Thank you.
Thank you. And when no one else signed up to speak, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda. Ms. Porterfield seconded by Mr. Kozier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now we'll move to privilege of the floor regarding general city business. I have five people signed up to speak. Anthony Carrada.
Good evening, Mr. Burnett, Council, Madam President. For I get to speak on today with my positive and negative remarks of the mayor's state or city address, I'd just like to give some word of praise to the fire and the police. First, the fire department. On the 5th of this month, near Repusal Bakery, the public defender's office, the two law firms, a manhole cover blew five feet in the air. I praise the fire department paramedics for the job well done with that because that could have been a very bad and dangerous situation. The praise for our police department is all the rest that they've been making. Manly with the one said last, the last year's council meeting, and stabbing on Hewlett, and the one they just reached me from last February. Now, the positive and negative remarks out of the mayor's state or city. The positive, yes, the city's looking a little better. Downtown's looking better. Parts of the city looking better. Yes, it's nice to have nice little green spots where people can relax, read, whatever they have. The negative is the mayor keeps saying assisted, the crime's down. Now, as I said, that's the last meeting last year. Some aspects of crime is down, not all. Now, I just happened to go to the library, get statistics from our police department, and statistics from a website called City Data, showing exactly how much crime is down in the city of Schenectady. Now, I'm just going to give some highlights here. First is that I was surprised to see this. According to the research here of New York State and others, there were 183 registered sex offenders living in the city of Schenectady as of January 8th, 2016. The ratio of number of residents to the sex offenders is 361.1. Now, just how bad and dangerous Schenectady is compared to other cities? Schenectady, 438. Scotia, 119.8. Albany, 337.9. Altamont, 63.8. Cohoes, 127.1. Lord of Lea, 216.3. Grand Island, 134.8. Troy, 400. Now, these are statistics right here for others. Notice the green bars are the national average. The purple is Schenectady. Now, Mr. Burnett, I should say, commission and council, the president, take a good close look at this. Where's the national average? Right here. Where's the city of Schenectady regards to crime and all that? Way up here, and keeps growing and growing and growing. Mayor assist and Mr. Burnett, you and the mayor assist in our police force, the Bad Apple's police force. Now, it's good officers, you do the job. The Bad Apple's in the police force, you and the mayor assist, crime's down. If crime was down, as you, like us, we the people who see Schenectady, to believe, and quit pouring a wool over our eyes, the fact that crime's not down, because if it was, people in the city and the neighborhoods have been dealing with it three, six, or five days a year, 24/7, think they would feel safe? They don't. Here's the proof. Here's the proof.
Thank you. Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council, Mayor Pro Tem. One of the announcements, in the six weeks, March first, would be property assessment. Please agree if your property assessment for the last four years, the City Council has given the developers and contractors twenty-five to fifty percent off of the reduction of their homes. Use those through the claims committees to help you to get your reduction. The city still needs to do a reassessment. Also, Councilman Paula Menne, I hope I got, okay, good, made news in Washington, D.C. So, I was talking to the President of the Society of Travel Agents, and they heard about his proposal for his bed tax, hotel tax. I kind of explained it was for curb cuts and so forth. One of their main concerns was is that it doesn't become a slush fund, that they basically, it's tied so hard that it takes a crowbar in order to pull the money apart. They are very extremely aggressively fighting against any kind of bed tax that ever grows. So, they've got my name, my phone number, and they've told me to contact, keep them in touch. So, I said I would. But you made Washington news. So, not the first time, right, but at least, but they are aware of it, and over the last year, they have fought aggressively against many, many of the states and the counties and the cities of doing it. Also, the casino just got their license. The City Council still has not done its due diligence in requiring, A, the apprenticeship program. All three casinos, including the casino here in Schenectady, have all signed PLA agreements with unions. All the union's contracts that have gone through the last three, four years have not had a strong apprenticeship program put into it. City of Schenectady's apprenticeship program is the stronger than the state's apprenticeship program, and it has not been enforced. This city needs to take a stance to make sure that we're getting it. That is one of the main things that they're telling us, that we don't have qualified people. Well, how do you get qualified people? Is by having an apprenticeship program. Also, too, is that there is no 503 program put in place for affirmative action for persons with disabilities. I know I'm working with the City Council's Attorney's Office on that issue, but this City Council needs to bring forth some kind of a policy procedures on affirmative action and hiring minorities and persons with disabilities in the city. We need to take a strong stance before the work starts at this new casino construction site. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy Hall.
Well, I say this, we've got one big problem, and I know, in Schenectady, a lot of the sidewalks on Albany Street and some other, and land and terrace need to be fixed very bad, and they need to put lines down on Mulholland Street where everybody can park, because it seems like certain people always have to go around two, three times to try to find a parking place, and can't park. Now, I know they got this on Union Street, they got the lines down there where you can park, and how much space each car can have. Why can't they do that on Mulholland Street and Albany Street, Mulholland Street and Hemington Street there? I'd like to see that done. That would solve a lot of problems. I think for a lot of people, a lot of people trying to find a parking place and can't get a parking place. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary McLean.
I fail to understand how any member of City Council can stand in this chamber and tell the community that the departing president treated everyone the same. Can City Council members see this light at the moment that the timer is activated on the podium? By the time I walk up to the microphone, the seconds have already been ticking away. Has that happened to City Council members? Are your comments limited to a specific timeframe? Did a voice ever interrupt your train of thought? Are lights flashing in your faces during miscellaneous business? Not to my knowledge. She even asked the public to respect council, and this is what the taxpayers have sitting here. The help was always treated differently than those who pay their salaries. On another point, has the mayor and City Council noticed all the convictions? State and local officials have received because they were lured by the green stuff, and they didn't even handle the money. They just thought about it, and the temptation was too great. That is what is going to happen to casino workers when they are let out of the building in handcuffs because they stole from the house. And thank to council members, you made it all possible because you waved a lollipop in front of them. What lousy work. Thank you.
Thank you. P D. Vorus.
This is the only town meeting that does require this contraption here. Other town meetings, there's no time limit. Sometimes they even sit in their seats and they talk back and forth to the legislators, and they get asked questions and actually get answers. They're prepared to answer their constituency, and I think that's a real plus. Listening to some of the other public meetings, especially, I like Rotterdam, I like the way they do business there, and they're considering doing away with one clerk position and hiring about four more policemen because of a crime, increase in level of crime there from people on the outside, from other communities. And someday, they'll get smart, figure out where these communities are from, they're gonna send you a tax surcharge for these creatures of fun, frolic, and activism, I like that word, they're activists, you know, it could happen one of these days. Figure that into your cost-benefit analysis. I think that ought to do a real nice service for the public. Miriam Kadista, I'm tired of hearing her being bantered around. I've been around here to Scotia, Glenville, I even went to Peebles Island, otherwise known as Cohoes, and to Vent Shaked Island. The construction is humongous, absolutely humongous, not even to, I mean, some of the old stuff that hasn't even been filled yet, Harmony Hall, that construct, there's all kinds of construction going on around here. I wouldn't question her about this affirmative action. Everybody's busy, they aren't coming here and complaining about jobs. They're all working, and they're pulling in good, sound wages, in case you don't know about unions. Yeah, I think you ought to do something about the meeting here. Rotterdam is also concerned about the additional traffic due to the casino here. I couldn't get with that, but apparently it's a reality in their neighborhood, and I'd like to know what happened to cost-benefit analysis and marketing studies that would show that in a sixty-acre plot over there, a hundred-plus houses that would last well over fifty years, provide taxes and schooling, children, families, healthy families, that want to walk to the proctor. I can't see where that wouldn't be more beneficial than anything that they plan on putting over there, but as the mayor says, readaptable.
And we'll move on to miscellaneous business of the council. Ms. Porterfield. Sorry, Mr. Riggi, I didn't see you. Okay, Mr. Riggi. Can we flip a coin?
Thank you. Want to just make note that January twenty sixteen is National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, and this past Friday, there was an art show, actually, which brought attention to this matter. It was called "Human Trafficking in Our Neighborhood: A Community Responds." It was held over at the Proctor's, and it was extremely enlightening, but to know that this unfortunate thing is going on in our community, it's extremely real. And so, just wanted to bring that up, and if folks want more information about that, they can contact SAFE Incorporated at three seven four zero one six six to find out more about what's going on and more about how to be involved in the call to action regarding that. Additionally, the, oh, hold on one second here, there it is, okay. NAMI is doing a peer-to-peer veteran support group at Stratton VA Hospital. NAMI is the National Alliance for Mental Illness. It's going to start on Tuesday, February nineteenth, from nine thirty to eleven thirty a.m., and it's specifically for veterans, and it's going to combine combat and non-combat vets, and includes folks with co-occurring disorders. And the instructors will be, this will be done by peers, so by other vets. So, this is free and open to veterans, obviously, and so if people feel like, you know, that this is a need, or they know someone who may, this may be beneficial for, the registration deadline is January fifteenth. And for additional information or to reserve a spot, they can call Elizabeth Donovan at five one eight six two six five three four seven. And again, it's peer-to-peer counseling for veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riggi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of announcements, and Jason brought up about March first for grieving, but I think more important, people have to remember to file for their exemptions, those that have to, senior exemptions, some with disability exemptions. It has to be by March first, and that's pretty important, because sometimes people just kind of forget, and it'll be here before we know it. Bellevue Preservation, Inc. will meet this Thursday, January fourteenth, seven p.m. at St. Paul's Episcopal Church, nineteen eleven Fairview Avenue. The public's invited, and the guest is going to be Chief Falvo will be speaking at that meeting. And speaking of that, the Falvo Foundation and the Malozi family are having a fundraiser dinner on Wednesday, January twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, at Malozi's Restaurant, nineteen thirty Curry Road. The seating is five p.m. to seven thirty p.m. Reservations are strongly recommended, and the price is adults nineteen ninety-five, children twelve to five years of age, thirteen ninety-five, and under five is free. And there's also some drink specials. But this is a great community project, Jack's Place. The Falvo family took a family tragedy and really turned into something really positive for the community, and I can't commend them enough for taking the bull by the horns, because that's a terrible thing to have to go through, but this is such a positive thing, and anybody that's driven by on Rosa Road, the new project, it's gonna be really great, and it's gonna help a lot of people. So, whoever can make this fundraiser, I think it's really important that people go support the Falvo Foundation, because they're really doing good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Kozier?
Thank you, Madam President, and I'd like to be the first to welcome our newest, but not our youngest, council member to us, John Paul Menne. It's been a pleasure, and welcome aboard, and we look for four great years with you and the rest of our council members, so congratulations, and look forward to working with you. Just continuing on our announcements, the Woodlawn Neighbor Association, together with the Woodlawn Park Development Committee, will be hosting our annual pasta dinner. It'll be this Wednesday night at the Ancient Order of Hibernian Hall, right on State Street, and it's going from five thirty till seven o'clock, and tickets are eight dollars in advance, five dollars for children twelve and under, and ten dollars at the door. I certainly have some tickets available with myself, I know Chad does. You can also purchase them at Grassil's Barber Shop, or just go to our Facebook page or our website, and I'm sure Sparrow will be able to accommodate you. But again, we continue our efforts there at Woodlawn Park, and again, thanks to our committee, again chaired by Ms. Porterfield and now-county legislator, Richard Paterni, and of course, the mayor, for the support of all the playground equipment in the city, and Woodlawn Park is very, very grateful for what you have done for our children in the Woodlawn area. It was a great honor, and thank you, Madam President, for making aware Sapphire. I think it was just a wonderful presentation, she's touched a lot of hearts in our community. And I spoke with her earlier, she was actually a student at Hamilton Elementary School, where my wife, of course, is the school nurse, and she's remembered Sapphire, and just a great young lady. But there was a flyer that came out that, it's called Sapphire's Angels, and the young lady has received hundreds and hundreds and thousands of cards that are now being placed at the Rotterdam Industrial Park, and they're looking for volunteers to please come out and help open these cards. Believe it or not, folks have been sending cash, they've been sending check donations to the young lady for her care, and they're worried if they don't get to some of these cards, that some of these things might not get opened, and of course, you know, used well for her caring. Again, it's at the Rotterdam Industrial Park, which is off of Route Seven, it's building number three, and they're in bay number six. They are there from Monday through Friday, ten a.m. until eight p.m., and they're even working on the weekends, Saturdays and Sundays, from ten a.m. till five p.m. So, those young men and women who are still here on college break, and I've sent out a lot of emails already today to some of those folks that I know are still here, we encourage them to come out and do some volunteering for a great cause. Jack's Place, as Councilman Riggi had mentioned, I already made my reservations today, just a wonderful opportunity, again, to show some great support for Jack and his son, and I do strongly recommend reservations. If anyone has been there, Malozi on Wednesday nights, it's a very busy place to be, so please get your reservations in, and again, it's for a great cause. And finally, the Schenectady County Public Library is gonna be hosting some workshops for our single parenting folks. They're gonna be held on Saturdays, beginning on January thirtieth through March fifth, and it's gonna be at the Mount Pleasant Branch Library, which of course is right over there on Crane Street, and it's a six-week, community-long program for single parents of middle-school and high-school-aged children. Refreshments and childcare is gonna be provided, they're gonna have some great speakers there facilitating, and just a wonderful opportunity for some folks who are really looking for help and direction, and just how do we work with our young men and women. And so, again, it's at Schenectady County Public Library, go to their website, scpl.org, for some information. Again, the workshops are free, childcare will be provided as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Paul Menne?
The progress on the Central Park train and bringing that back continues, it's going quite well, but I could enlist the public's help if possible. Looking for pictures of the Central Park flyer, the bigger train, we have some of the little train, but we could use some of the big train. So, if anybody has those available, I have not learned my city email address yet, so I will read it, you please email me at jpolimeni@schenectadyny.gov, and I believe that's on the website, and if you could send those pictures in, that would be quite useful into bringing that train back. Secondly, in regards to Mr. Plank's comments and regarding the public-private partnerships with trade organizations, I believe that's quite important, and it's something that we've had very, very preliminary contact with some of the organizations with, and hopefully that'll continue to move forward as well. And lastly, one- And lastly, one of our regulars at the meeting tonight, Marva Isaacs, is not with us. She recently had some knee surgery, so we send her out our best wishes and quickly get back together. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Kozier.
And I thought Angelica Morris was gonna be here today from the Human Rights Commission, and again, this Sunday, January 17th, is the annual Martin Luther King event. It's gonna be held at the Mount Olivet Baptist Church, which is on 1068 Park Avenue, begins at 2:30 in the afternoon, so we please, we encourage everybody to come out and show support for this great event, this annual event. And again, it's 2:30 this Sunday at the Mount Olivet Baptist Church on 1068 Park Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner?
Thank you. Just to update you on the situation with the police chief, this city is of the size that New York State law requires and mandates that you have a chief of police. That position is a civil service position, as is the assistant chief job. We requested the Civil Service Commission in Schenectady County to petition the state to set up that examination for here in Schenectady, and we also requested the County Civil Service Commission, I appeared before them requesting that they expand the eligibility of the candidate pool to the four adjoining counties, in addition to Schenectady, which are gonna be Montgomery, Schaeary, Saratoga, and Albany. And we will, based upon their acquiescence to that, probably sometime in March, have the examinations, they are scheduled by the state, the exams given the same date, same time statewide. We will have two separate examinations for both chief and assistant chief. One of those will be the promotional examination, that is for in-house or people already in the Schenectady Police Department, and the requirements to take the police chief exam promotionally will be that you must be an assistant chief or a lieutenant with at least two years in grade as of the day of the examination. The competitive portion is the people not in the city police department at this time. They will be required to also have a similar level of experience that equates to what is written for the in-house officers, if you will. The deadline for the applications is going to be postmarked of January 19th, and again, I anticipate the exams will be held probably the first week in March. Now, the scoring is not done quickly, because the state does the scoring process. They will examine the, every single question and every single response, they will look at whether or not there were questions on that examination based upon the number of people who, for example, got that wrong is overwhelming, whether or not the question may not have been a proper question. Then they have to decide if, in fact, they're going to discount that from the scoring. They'll get into veterans' credit, things of that nature. So you could be easily looking at the publishing of a list based upon the state's review of it for Schenectady in June, possibly even July, and should there be an issue where someone files some type of an appeal, it could go on even longer. So I don't have the crystal ball to tell you, you can count on it being here, and this is the month and the day, but the process has begun, and we'll see where it takes us. But those jobs are civil service, they are required in the city, and the process is also civil service for all those people. So we'll know, or at least I will know, I would hope, a few days after the 19th, who the prospective candidate pool will be, and now, civil service will wade through all those and determine whether or not the applicants, whether they be from the police department or from the other jurisdictions, in fact, meet the qualifications as written in the exam announcement. That's the second step of the process. I'll be around if you'd like, you know, some answers to the questions. And as far as young Sapphire Terry as the father of three girls, the grandfather of three more girls, how can you not take a look at that child and say, despite the tragedy of the situation, you know, somebody provided this little angel for the rest of us to live with, learn from, and just admire the courage it must have taken to get her from that night to what we saw and heard tonight? What a precious, precious little girl. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for the update. I, too, want to welcome Mr. Palamene to his first meeting, and offer you a rare glimpse of me behind the bar tomorrow night. I am doing the Battle of the Bartenders for Schenectady Kiwanis with Mr. Ray Legere. It's for a very, very good cause. It funds youth scholarships through Schenectady Kiwanis, and all money stays right here in Schenectady, so if you want to stop by Firestone 151, 5:30 to 7:30, have a drink with your friends, and put a little money in the tip jar for the kids, I certainly would appreciate it. It'll be a rare occasion, so take advantage. In addition to the Martin Luther King Jr. celebration on Sunday, there is also a forum on Thursday night at this community college from 6:00 to 8:00, which will be a more interactive discussion, so I encourage everyone to participate in that. And segueing into MLK Day on Monday, our committee meeting will be moved to Tuesday at 5:30 p.m. And, yes, Commissioner?
I'll tell you, because I'm not sure, you've got it by email, but in case you did not, the swearing-in for the new five police officer candidates will be tomorrow at 11:30 in the Rotunda. If you have the opportunity to stop by, we'd certainly love to see you, but due to the illness in the mayor's family, most likely, Ms. Perazzo and I will be officiating at that ceremony, but if you'd like to be there, that's where we'll be at 11:30 and introduce the five new police candidates.
Thank you. And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Mr. Kozier, seconded by Mr. Ferrari, we are adjourned. Not too much coughing.